For Monday, October 18th, 2021, the Jackson Township Planning Board Meeting. Mr. Dolan?
Present.
Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker?
Present.
Mr. Jezwicki is absent. Mr. Loisey is absent. Ms. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Wall is absent. Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Ricardi?
Here.
Mr. Haring?
Here.
Mr. Hudak?
Here.
Aye.
Hello, Winston.
Aye.
Aye.
Second.
Aye.
You have a couple of. Chairman, I apologize. This is Resolution 2021-21. Preliminary final, major subdivision two for starting. The RG2, 2021, residential. One multi-tenant lot, then we have matters. We had a number of these. We have to figure the money. Have to access. The affordable units to ensure that. Overall. Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Second.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Okay. We have one. One matter for discussion. And that is ordinance number 2021. And that was in the most of the county. Dotson County. Of Jack. Township of Jack. County motion. They will reduce the landing cap to 364. Soil, soil, fill. In its entirety and replacement with a new chapter. Three, sixty-four. The vital soil fill important. Amen. Does everyone have a chance to review that? Questions or comments? Good. And we had some discussions in our last meeting. They have the camera out. Questions? Ever made a model?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I've had an opportunity to review the ordinance. As it follows the NJDEP standards. We find that the. Ordinance referred to us from council is in fact in keeping with the master plan and zoning ordinance. And as such, we recommend the board act affirmatively on it and send it back to the governing body for second reading.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, just to follow up, as I read the ordinance. It provides for when there is an import of material that if represented to the planning board in their review and their approval. I don't want to say supersedes, but it can be used in place of actually getting a soil infill permit. So. From an engineering perspective, now there's going to be the question, are you bringing any dirt? If it is yet, yes, then you, the board needs to consider how are you going to address this ordinance? Bye.
Second.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Ms. Britto? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Haring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We started this application back in August 16th. It's proposed to convert an existing. Animal care facility that had an approval to be converted from an existing single-family home to an animal facility. Now we have that as a professional office building. When the application was initially submitted, the site improvements were somewhat scarce. The applicant. Asked the carrier tonight to provide some revised plans. We now have a paved driveway. We have some landscaping. We have some street trees and landscaping. I'll leave it to the applicant to. Address the or specify the improvements. But they're back again converting the. Animal care facility to a professional office. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our office has a report dated October 12th of 2021. Generally, the project is still located in the NCT Neighborhood Commercial Zone. Where the business professional office uses or permitted uses and everything else that Doug said. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Pfeffer, to the applicant. As your professionals indicated, we will be for the board with the application, a fairly straightforward application. While the, the board had some concerns regarding the site and, and the plans. We had revised the plans. We had submitted them. Your professionals had a chance to review them. We still have gun lines here to address the engineering testimony. And we have also added Ms. Christine Capone for planning testimony, which we'll get to when we're done with. We're done with the engineering part of it. The exhibit, I guess I'll wait for Mr. Lines to be sworn in and then we'll. I think I, I have only A1 from last time. Okay, so when, when Mr. Lines is sworn in, we'll mark that as A2 and he'll identify it and we'll go from there.
I do.
That's correct. Then if you could just identify the new exhibit and we'll mark that as A2.
So on the, on the easel, I have sheet. Six of seven from. No, it's actually, it's, it's the same exhibit. It's just the, there's some fine lines where existing trees that you can, you can hardly see. But these existing large trees. I'm sorry. No, it, it's the same plan. Maybe zoom in a little bit might, might help. Is that? I don't think that's the same sheet. Sorry. This is the one, yeah, this is six of seven. Six of seven.
You're on four of seven. If you could scroll down.
So from here, while, well, just to get. Here, I'm going to repeat myself. I'm going to take advantage of the general. Regulations here. Starting to ask on behalf of the board, I think you find it easier yourself. If you not only present the application. Truncle. Start.
Handout.
So that could, and give them out to the board at least.
We'll bring handouts, no problem.
Not a problem.
Just with the audience who follow along makes it difficult.
With, with the one on the wall, that's a great idea. Sorry, brought onto the team. So in the, in the. Notes from the prior meeting, there was a, some recommendations on landscaping. That we provide additional landscaping along the front and side property lines. We have proposed a rain garden along the. Easterly, Easterly side of the property as the property. Slopes from. From west to east. We've also provided a rain garden in the front of the property. Inside that U-shaped turnaround and landscaping around the existing sign. The. On the, on the west side, we provided a single row of evergreens. In the latest review letter, it was requested that we make that row 10 feet wide. It's about five feet now, so we could add another row of evergreens along there to address that comment in the letter. Okay. If we could go back to. Which one was this? Sheet three? That's possible. Oh. Okay. If you could go down a little bit. Okay, so the. One of the, one of the concerns the board had was where the wetlands are with reference to the property. So this is the, this is the outbound of the property. And this is the, the delineated wetlands line on the lot next door. So at the closest point, we're about 60 feet to the corner. And, you know, we're probably another 120 feet to the building. From the wetlands to across there. On the. Do we scan? Yeah, could you scan to the right, please? So we can look at this, this side of the plan. Okay. So. To address some other concerns the board had, we now are proposing to pave the front parking lot and the turnaround. Propose fire striping on the inside and on the outsides that'll be submitted to the. Fire commissioners for approval. There, we've added this piece of paving on the east side of the building from the front to the back. There was a concern that fire equipment could get to the back, so that if there's any problem in the back of the, back of the building, they'd have access. And we've added a trash enclosure on the side of the building for a rollout can or. You know, or however they would, the, it would get picked up. And I. Pretty sure that addressed the board's concerns from the last meeting based on the minutes and a few of the other things that we've, that we have added to the plan. You have any questions?
Board has any questions of Mr. Lines or professionals have any questions?
Oh, the sign, the. Actually, I forget which, it's on one of the sheets. I apologize. I believe it's right there and we do identify the size of the sign. We did not have time to apologize for that, to actually draw a sketch of the sign. And put it on the plans with, with whatever the text would be. But it does indicate what the size of the sign is on. It's, it's in its existing location. Which is at the property line. I think it actually goes over the property line by. Two feet or so. Yes, in the middle of the island. But it's, but it's out closer to the road because there's, there's a good 15 to 20 feet from the edge of the road to where the sign is. So it is an existing sign. It's there now. It's what you would see if you, if you went there.
Mr. Chairman? Just so we're clear, on page three of seven shows that the. Ground sign is going to be 26 feet from the right of way. And I just want to make sure that. That's clear, so if the board acts in the affirmative, there's no relief being requested, so there's none being granted. And it shows on this set of plans that it's a full 26 feet back from the right of way, which is another probably. 10 or 12 feet from the street. So if it.
That's correct.
More than that, or that's not correct, we should just get it on the record before we act on it.
And we're not seeking anything additional to what's already there. We're not.
It's about two feet off the ground and it's five by, five by five square.
That was mine.
Do you have any renderings? No, we were, we're, we've proposed from the beginning to keep it as is. We're not proposing any, any changes to the existing building. We're just changing the use. So, you know, to, and we're trying to improve the site, but put a lot of money into the building. It's an existing building. It's just a change of use right now. So. Sorry. Correct. It, it's an animal hospital now. It was, it was a house before that. Right. So it's, it's going to keep the same look it has now.
Are you proposing, your client proposing any additions and changes due to the building structure?
The only change to the structure or anything that's actually connected to the building is we're adding a handicap ramp on the west, on the west side to the rear door of the building. Any other changes would be interior changes as far as walls to either put walls back where they were removed when it was an animal care facility.
So just with the handicap ramp. Previous staff, what is it asked that? The applicants had an accent to try to maintain. Because I presume the ramp is going to zigzag. Is that true? Or is it going straight up?
It goes from the parking space landing, it goes straight up to the back and then it turns and goes another five to 10 feet to the door.
To the extent you had a canopy or some covering as a petition of approval, board has done that, done that in the past.
We would have no objection to that.
Do you, has anyone or perhaps even a client that's here, can you at least put on the record? Theory of several statements, some board members could take notice of this construction. But what is it? Is it stucco or wood, you know, slats? What is the makeup existing?
I, I have to apologize. I have not been out to the, out to the site in over a year to, to look at the building. I don't remember what it looks like.
I could bring it up on my phone in about 10 seconds. So, Mr. Chairman, you want not to do that? Or perhaps when you bring the planner, perhaps Mr. Lines can do that. To a reasonable degree of engineering, certainly have a guess as to what.
That's fine. If we can maybe go aside from, from the side of what the building looks like, if there are any other engineering questions. If not, I can call Ms. Capone to do the planning testimony, put that on the record, and then we can come back to Mr. Lines in a few minutes. Again, if, if the board's professionals have any questions, concerns from engineering standpoint, we can get that done now and then we'll have Ms. Capone.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have two. I'd, I'd like to see that side driveway taken to pass the rear of the house. And I'd like to see the trash enclosure taken away from. Adjacent to the house. Put it at the end of the driveway. I don't want, I don't want garbage against the house.
Just if he does, how far past house would you like to see it? Just so we.
10 feet past the back of the house.
10 feet past. We have no prob, we have no problem with that.
And move the trash enclosure, please. Thank you. Yes, we can do those two things.
Yes, there was a question. It's fine, if we can extend the, the side driveway 10 feet past the house. So we'll just extend that. We have no objection to that. And we're going to.
Move the, move the trash enclosure away from the building.
This 10 feet past. And the trash enclosure will move away from the building.
If we can go back to the sign for a minute. I think the existing sign is on the, basically on the front property line. And it's applicant's representation that they want to keep it there?
Yes, yes.
But I also have a plan that shows it 26 feet back at a conforming location. Which I think might be a better idea. If there's, I don't really see a justification for the variance. It's in an island area. Back and make the sign small. Three of seven? When you sit?
If you have a plan that shows it setback 26 feet, that's where, that's where we're going to move it.
Okay, so we're going to move it back 26 feet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So which is?
Just made the representation. Do we know if it's going to be back of it? How's it going to be with?
The.
Michael Thompson.
Done. The, the exhibit that's up on the board or up on the, on the screen should, still shows a sign out in the front of the property. And the leader that goes off to the, you know, up and off to the. That are right. Says. Just gives the size. It doesn't give a setback. So. Well, that's the same. It's, I have a. Nine, 14, 21.
Sheet three, seven.
Sheet three, seven.
Formulation is a good idea.
We're not asking for any variances. It's, it'll be conforming and 26 feet, that's where it'll be. Mr. Peters? Backlit sign. It'll be a backlit sign.
There's no lighting plan?
Yes, there's a.
Yes, we, we had submitted with the revised plans. It's sheet. Five of seven.
Yes.
Is, Mr. Chairman, the, the lighting for the, the site lighting, the lighting of the sign isn't addressed in the light.
Correct. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking for. I apologize. I misunderstood the question.
Mr. Riker?
I'm Miss Rachel.
There are the remaining signs on the board. The applicant has the potential to apply. Here in life. Then. The applicant. It's not. Underneath your round of signs. We don't know what the sign is. Details aren't there. We don't know from one feet to the other, what we're doing. And we did specifically address. The architect's. Yes, I know. But we specifically said this is the main title of the main track. That are plenty of other hall feet. And we're trying to do this all. Yes, you can step forward. And you, you must need to be. Head up. You need to water. And. One for this.
Mr. Chairman?
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I think. As we indicated also, we try to tell applicants, ask them please, so that it's easier to follow what's going on. Have these PDFs and whatnot. My, my respective recommendation is that. Would you hear from the planner? Tie some of these things together. The minds, an opportunity to rework. To summarize. Applicant is engineering arguments and submissions and the board can then determine as to what further steps to take. Respectfully, I'm on board that at the end of the day, this, the application is more just. Strike and adjust. The application is addressing an existing building to, to change. The board desires. Now, the board desires. Certain upgrades on the sides of building structures. There is no specific architectural design standards, the Jackson ordinance. We're certainly pushing applicants forward on this. One of the things that was accepted at, at was the canopy for the handicap access. I think the planner can kind of tie some of Mr. Riker's concerns together. And if she can't, then the board can left to its own, its own device. So I see Mr. Professor agree with that.
That is fine.
Yeah, Mr. Pepper, listen, in my opinion, if you're going to the well, if you're carrying that bucket, fill the bucket up. And, and, and don't just, you know, bring me a partially filled bucket. You guys are going through the effort to, to convert and. What was a home and a veterinarian office and now it's something else. Got to step up. Do a little better job. Not just leaving it the way that it is, looking like a home that was converted. You want it to be an office building. You want it to be successful. So that being said.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick process question. Is this a use variance, Mr. Ritter? It's just a, a change of use?
Change of use. From one use which was, became permitted to be variance to a permitted use.
So it would be the planning board, not the zoning board?
Right.
Okay.
So respectfully, I put it on the record. Technically judge sometime. The, the planner was also shaking their investment. I presume you can. That particular question.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. We'll jump right into that testimony and, unless there's any other questions?
Go ahead.
This time if I can call Ms. Cofone.
Would the board remain standing? Ms. Cofone, you sadly swear or affirm testimony information question. A comment you'd like to present for the board to represent the truth to the whole people.
Yes, I do.
Can you kindly give us your comments about your last and your affiliation with the chairman? You are a qualified patient.
Hi, good evening. For the record, Christine. That's okay. Usually don't have a problem being heard. So there, that sounds much better. But for the record is Christine Mazzaro, N A Z Z A R O. Cofone is C O F as in Frank, O N E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. I am testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have been practicing as such for 25 years, closer to 26, actually. I've been qualified here in Jackson and in excess of other 420 something other planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services. I'm an affordable housing special master in about 30 different districts. My firm is the appointed planner for the Casino Redevelopment Authority in Atlantic City. And we do some municipal planning. We represent C-Bright, but by and large, I'm an applicant's witness. My firm does not do opposition work. We do by and large applicant work before planning and zoning boards. You're welcome. This is actually, in my opinion, a very straightforward and conforming application. The subject property is an existing developed lot in the NC zone. And the use that is on the property today was established via a use variance. So at some point, there was a variance given from the zoning board of adjustment to allow the applicant to utilize the property as a doggy daycare with one overnight person to stay if it was required for, for that, for that business. So that was what's on the property today. So the applicant is actually looking to eliminate that use that was established by use variance and return the site back to a use that is conforming with the use that was envisioned in the NC zone. The NC zone allows as of right, both how you qualify them here in Jackson as professional offices and business offices. They're both allowed as of right. Those are both defined terms in the ordinance and they're both allowed as of right. So what the applicant is looking to do here is completely consistent with the NC zone. And we don't need any variances at all. We are creating no variances. This application conforms in every intent and in every way with the intent of the NC zone. The only variance that exists on the property, if you can see, I don't know what we have this marked in evidence. So the only variance that we need is for the shed that's in the rear of the property. That sits seven feet off of the property line where the ordinance requires 15. That's an existing condition. We're not introducing that onto the property today. So that's essentially the only variance relief. With that being said, I hear you and I appreciate the fact that you did ask the applicant. I was not here in the, the last hearing, but I did read the minutes and my firm got up to speed. I did review both Mr. Clea and Mr. Peters' letter. So I think we have made some great strides in the application. In his review letter, Mr. Peters indicates the things that we have done as far as adding the lighting details to the plan, adding the landscaping details to the plan. One of the things that I did want to establish for the record was that in Mr. Peters' review dated October 12th, he did indicate that the plans have been updated to include a row of shrubs on the side property line. And he asked us to indicate if we would comply with the 10 feet or we would be seeking a waiver. So that's on our side property line. I know it might be easier to see on the plan we had over here. But we are proposing some shrubs along that side property line. It's our eastern property line and we do intend to comply with the 10 feet. So I, I heard the colloquy back and forth about the sign. I mean, the, the sign is going to be in a conforming location. I would submit to the board that, you know, I've been doing this for 25 years. I, you, you're here as volunteers. I know your time is important to you. So it's important that we come, but I do feel this application is in shape and, and ready to be considered by the board. I would just ask the board maybe to consider maybe submitting a detail as what that sign's going to look like. It's a fair question. This is a fairly well-traveled road, so not an unfair ask to say what's the sign going to look like. But it is going to be in a conforming location. We did show the location on the plans. So the applicant, I think, could certainly as a condition of approval, perhaps submit that sign detail to the board as a, as a compromise in a way to allow, this is a very, in my opinion, a substantially conforming application. So to ask us, you know, to delay again when we did make some substantial plan revisions, we just asked the board to consider that as an option. Particularly when you look at the master plan goals here and the master plan recommendation for the land use plan element to achieve a pattern and mix of land uses that achieves various community planning objectives, including the provision of quality residential neighborhoods, protection of national, natural resources, the economic development of the community and the creation of a livable and desirable community. So I think, you know, in the interest of promoting economic development in the NC zone, I think this application is, like I said, conforming in all ways. The only variance that's granted, that's required here, if it's even granted because it's an existing condition, is that shed. And I think the board can certainly grant that under the C1 statutory criteria, which is talks about lawful pre-existing conditions. So I see only betterments and improvements here for this application. So I see no reason why the app, the, the board couldn't move favorably on the applicant's request and, and try to move this application forward. We did, as, as indicated in Mr. Peters' most recent review of this, we did make some substantial plan, plan changes. I understand there might be a few things that need to be tied up, but I think we could probably, if the board would so indulge us, allow us to do that as a condition of approval.
There were quite a few things that were handled. Taken care of as per our recommendations. Now, in your professional opinion, as a planner who has worked on redevelopment and fund communities, we have a home that looks like it was built in the 60s. And they're saying that essentially they're not changing anything on the outside of this building. And this being such a well-traveled road and they're going through the motions of, you know, turning this into an office building. In your professional opinion, do you think that it's proper for the outside of the building to remain unchanged with those 60s look? And for the, the applicant not to submit elevations of what the outside is going to look like?
So I, I hear you, I hear you, Chairman, in that, you know, of course, as planners, one of the things we're always looking to do is increase the curb appeal of a site. And I, I, I understand what you're asking for. However, I think at this point, the applicant is looking to get the, get his use and get, get the site approved. And then perhaps at some point in the future, he can return to the board if he intends to maybe expand the structure. I'm not sure. But it is a permitted use in the zone. He is introducing landscaping on the site, which will increase the curb appeal. And in my opinion, does it look like an office building? No, it looks like a, a little house. But I think, you know, it has a cute little porch on it. It has some cute white shutters. There is some stone elevation on the building. So I don't think it's a structure that really lacks curb appeal. I think it's a, you know, a neat and tidy older structure. I would, is the way I would characterize it. It's a one-story building that has, like I said, a small porch with some stone, some stonework and some siding and some, some, some white shutters. So is it an unattractive structure? I don't think so. Could it benefit from a facelift at some point in the future? Sure. But I don't think that's part of this application. And I think when you have a permitted use in the zone and the applicant's already upgrading the site with respect to landscaping, that doesn't introduce that onto the site and we are getting some curb appeal and we're not asking for any variance relief. I don't think it's, I don't think it's something that we would want to see this application held up for because it, like I said, it is conforming with his own plan.
I, I hear you and I know you're working for your former and trying to get the application approved. And, you know, if you're going to go through the motions and you're going to do all these upgrades to the landscaping and so forth, to me, it's like putting wood to the concrete.
So, Mr. Chairman, again, just, just to clarify, you prefaced the, the first question with, you know, redevelopment zone. This is not a redevelopment zone.
He didn't say that.
I, I know, I said.
What, I'm, I'm to correct the record. I apologize. What he said was, Ms. Cofone is part of her expert, laying the groundwork of her expertise. One of the bases is she's the planner for the redevelopment agency in Atlantic City. So what he asked was, since you are involved in redevelopment and this is redevelopment in this site, we never talked about a redevelopment.
You're right. You don't use the word zone. I wanted to clarify, it's not, it is redevelopment of a property that's existing today, permitted at, okay.
I, I didn't make the argument that this was redevelopment. This is what I would consider if it's small, are redevelopment?
Your professional opinion.
Yes.
You have expertise with redevelopment.
I do.
And you stated that on the record. That's why I honed in on that. Because to me. It's just not going forward.
So, and, and one of the, sorry.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Riker.
It actually is a redevelopment that can, I will let it. We have a company. Yes, sir, we will. Give you a record. Sign, paint, or whatever. It's a greenhouse. It is. It's on a main, or a, it, it's probably one of the old. Type of apartment. Your other team member hasn't been to the site. Why do you mention that in a couple of form? I don't know. So a little frustrating. Okay, so it was permitted. Last meeting was the time to say, no, we will not. You said yes, we will. Not us. You said fine line. We made time. I heard that. Okay, and now tonight I'm hearing. Forget about it. Do we move back and find out exactly what was?
Respectfully, I, when we said we'd come back, I don't think we agreed to every single item that the board asked. We said we're going to go back and look at it and we did. We came back with revised plans. We came back with testimony. In my, in my experience, in my opinion, anytime you go ahead and make changes to the facade of an old ranch house, it's still, to an office, it's still going to look like a ranch house. I understand the board is frustrated with the, the, the thoroughfare of.
I think the point is that you missed that somewhere. I understand you.
So, Mr. Chairman. I think just, Mr. Pepper, if I disagree with this, obviously, you lack on some understanding. It's, it's simply, isn't it true, it's simply your position that as the applicant has made an application to change the use of the building to a permitted use, it's determined that, other than what you've agreed upon, you provide some, some sort of canopy or covering handicap access, that your client has no plans to change the facade, to change the structure. And then you'd ask the board, presumably, to put it somewhere to go forward.
So, yeah, just, so just to clarify, the exterior of the property is, is shaker, shingles, or stone accents. If there is a specific, the board feels more comfortable and this is what you would like it to be updated, paint color, repainted. You know, the applicant has no problem in agreeing to, to do that cosmetic uplift or refacing in terms of painting. But again, as far as the question before was, what's the facade? It's shaker and, and, and some, and some stone facade.
Perhaps if you made these statements earlier and I, I see, you know, Rick. I understand it's simply, it's a pretty simple application, change of use. And you made that statement about some updating going on. I think we put it before we did a lot of this.
I understand. The applicant's attention was, he was, he was, he was fine with the look of the property as it was. Hearing the board's concern, we have no objection to doing some painting and, and, and if there's a color the board would like to see. We understand. We'll take that and, and we'll do it. But as far as a complete, you know, rehab or, or refacing of the property, that's not what the applicant was seeking.
Perhaps a fresh coat of paint and a different color on the shutters to create some contrast and interest could be a reasonable condition of approval that the client, our client would agree to and that will upgrade the curb appeal of the site.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
You will work with our professionals. Bernie has a great base of colors.
We will work with them.
Yes. Any other testimony?
Not at this time, sir.
Board has any questions?
Anybody? No. At this time, I'd like to open it up to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak about this application, please step up to the microphone.
Second.
Thank you.
Favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Okay.
It's a straightforward application. I don't, I'm not looking to rehash everything. We would agree.
You know, listen, I, I understand. I just want you guys to work with our professionals. It, it's on a busy road. You, you're going through the motions for all this landscaping and so forth. You might as well, you know, do, do the whole project.
Right.
Understood. And, and as previously indicated, the awning for the ramp, we'd agree, there's no issue there. We agreed to work with the professionals regarding a refreshing of the paint color and, and the side. The rest of the testimony is fairly straightforward and we would ask the board to vote in favor of this application.
Yes, extending the driveway to the west of the, left of the property, 10 feet past the, the house and to. And moving the trash enclosure away from the building. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have absolutely no problem with working with the applicant, you know, fine-tune these architectures. I would like the opportunity to pacify the board. If the board was so, you know, so inclined to approve the application, and maybe it's more of a CYA, but you know, I like forest rain and maybe cedar shakes, you know. Just whatever the applicant, you know, proposes, I would like the opportunity just to run it by the board informally. And if they like it, fine. If not, then I can.
I think that this is definitely done as well. Most of the results. Would you agree to, you heard some questions about the opening sign as well. Where they put the sign plan and this architectural. You, they can be passed, no notice, just for administrative approval. Have recommendations, thank God. Appreciate that. So the professionals will prove that, make recommendations, but it's only for the board, for administrative approval. Ensure that the vision that the applicant has, professionals have artifacts.
We have no objection to saying.
Anybody? Now, she'll fit. Okay. Anyone here to make a motion?
Second.
We have a second.
Mr. Dolan?
With the stipulations, as Mr. Pepper said, yes.
Uh, with the stipulations, as, uh, Mr. Fleming said, yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Ms. Britto? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yeah.
Mr. Hoodak?
Yes. Congratulations.
Next up, we have block seven four zero two, lots two three, Jackson Office Complex, well. Mr. Cleat, you want to lead off?
Thank you. Um, the applicant sees primary and final major site plan approval associated with the construction of a two-story, a 41,000 square foot office building, including a full basement area on the subject property. The application is variance-free. Is, is variance-free. The applicant should initially talk about the jurisdiction and it's, uh, the track is somewhat is bisected by the Lakewood Township, Jackson Township border. Um, so some testimony from the applicant as to how Lakewood Township plays into the whole, whole approval process. The applicant is seeking a waiver from, uh, the environmental impact statement requirement, and we should have some testimony in support of that, um, in support of that waiver. Of course, the, um, project will connect the public water and sewer. And which has a testimony from the applicant as far as the just basic operations, you know, of the site. The applicant has submitted a traffic impact analysis as required by ordinance. So some testimony from the applicant regarding the conclusions of that, um, uh, study. The applicant's, um, uh, subject to, on West County line, subject to Ocean County, uh, Planning Board Engineering, uh, Department Review and Approval. Based on the square footage, a loading zone is, um, required by ordinance and has been provided. There are some testimony from the applicant regarding provided parking. Two, 205 spaces required and 217 spaces are provided, but does that excludes any basement area? So I don't know if it's the applicant's intention to, um, de-restrict the basement area, but some testimony regarding the long-range plans for the, for the basement. We reviewed the grading and drainage and take no, no exceptions. Some testimony from the applicant regarding the lighting and landscaping were proposed and any impacts on the adjacent properties. Uh, we provided the applicant with some technical revisions. That's all at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a report dated September 8th, 2021. The applicant is located in the HC Highway Commercial Zone in Jackson Township. They're also located in Lakewood Township. We should clearly delineate on the record how that's being handled so that it can be memorialized in a resolution. I would ask the applicant to address, um, the comments in our letter regarding, either waiver, variance relief for the parking area setbacks from the right-of-way and the total number of parking spaces. As Mr. Cleat indicated, there's a basement. You're building a two-story office building and a basement. Parking calculation standpoint, basement's office space. Until you deed restricted and tell us that you're not going to generate traffic or parking need for the basement, it's part of the application, simple. We also have some questions and comments with regards to the buffers that were, that are required and provided, and would ask the applicant to address those. And that's it for getting started. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Pfeffer, turn to the other, the applicant. I'm not sure if, maybe a few of you, I'm sorry, what? Long time no see. So actually, this, uh, this property was the site of a previous approval before, uh, Jackson Township and Lakewood back in 2007. Actually, the Lakewood portion, which at the time was one less slot, the Lakewood portion was literally just the curb cut to pull into the property. And that was actually my first land use application. My father told me if I can't get that approved in Lakewood for a curb cut, he says, you, you got the wrong profession. So that was, uh, that was a few years ago, and now we're back. Um, recently, this, at, this, uh, property owner was able to acquire the contiguous property, um, which again also crosses between Lakewood and Jackson. Uh, and we're now back before the board for a similar application, but on, on a larger scale. Uh, the previous application, uh, also had a basement, and there was a condition of that approval that it was for storage only. Uh, we will hear testimony this evening regarding, uh, this basement. This basement, again, is for storage only. Uh, we, we'll have some also additional testimony. We are seeking, um, uh, the board's input, uh, possibly a small, uh, gym area for, again, for the office itself and maybe a little cafeteria area. Um, but just eating, not, not, no preparation or anything, just some tables. Um, but we'll get through that testimony, uh, shortly. We do have for you three witnesses this evening. Uh, we have Mr. Brian Murphy regarding, uh, engineering and planning. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. Montefiore for the architectural and Mr. Kennel for traffic. Um, at this time, if I can call on our first witness, Mr. Murphy, have him sworn in. Have him sworn in and, uh, we'll mark the exhibits.
So, Mr. Gerger?
Um, I.
Go ahead.
Mr. Murphy, just stand up, please, and make. Your, um, testimony that would represent the truth, the truth, you know.
I do.
Can you kind of give us a full name, so you're asking creation and two chair, uh, qualification, or plan? Additionally, it's not the norm, it's not usually asked, uh, the chair. The focus first on the planning testimony instead of the end of that. Particularly address the jurisdictional question that was raised in the morning. How best we, we, we shared a lot more, a lot between.
Sure.
So Brian Murphy, M U R P H Y, uh, 1856 root nine. I'm a Principal FDWH Associate. So I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner in state New Jersey. I've been before this board, zoning board, I've had 100 on boards throughout the state. I've been qualified by the courts as well as a professional. I'm here tonight to present this application.
Please step forward.
Thank you.
Uh, the property in question, as we indicated, part of it is in Lakewood, part of it is in Jackson. Roughly 20% of the, of the, of the area is in Lakewood. Uh, the remainder is in Jackson. The entire site is 4, 4.16 acres in the HC zone and then the, and the Highway Commercial in Jackson. Uh, referring to, I guess, would be A1, which is the, uh, the aerial, the Google Earth aerial. Uh, property is indicated in red roughly in the center of the property, or center of the map. Uh, to the north, we have County Line Road, and then we have commercial shopping centers along the north. To the east, we have another commercial shopping center. To the west, we have a daycare center. And to the south, we have an apartment building and single-family residence, uh, down along Delaware Trail. Currently, the site is vacant and wooded. Uh, there are existing curbs and sidewalks along the frontage. Uh, we are proposing, a, as, uh, Mr. Pfeffer indicated, uh, there was a prior application on the site. That was for a 26,880 square feet office with basement. Uh, that was back in '07. Uh, the lot area has been increased by roughly an acre. Um, so we have a, a new proposal, which is going to be presented to you tonight. Uh, but again, it's going to be another office building with a proposed basement, and, uh, we'll get into that as we progress. If you'll bring up the site plan. Color rent, is there color rendering in there?
Might be one of the other exhibits.
Yeah, it would be a different exhibit for me.
Yeah, it wouldn't be one of the, one of the other top, um, yeah, the, the, one of the other exhibits, if you click on them.
It would be a, a different exhibit than this.
The next one, I think, says rendering.
Yeah, my, yeah, there we go. Thank you. Uh, A2 is the color rendering, the site plan, that was part of the application. Still disorienting because north, north is pointing down, which I'm not used to, uh, but we'll manage. Um, so access is off of two locations, off of County Line Road, and both, County Line is a divided highway in this area, and so both accesses are right in, right out. There's no parking along either one of those access drives as you come in and out until you get into the site and the main circulation of the site. Uh, there's, the drainage system is the underground recharge, the typical inlet with piping, and we have a recharge basin on the south side of the property along the rear. Uh, the Lakewood-Jackson border kind of bifurcates the property on a diagonal, uh, roughly where I'm pointing here, that there is a line there, it's just hard to see on this. So I, as I indicated, roughly 20% of the site is in Lakewood. Uh, the rest is in Jackson. Uh, we've received approval from, from Lakewood already. We're here tonight, uh, for your consideration, uh, for the application. The lots that are in Lakewood, there's two lots in Lakewood, those will be consolidated into one lot. There's two lots in Jackson. Those two lots will be consolidated in one lot. And continue, obviously, with what's in one town or remain in one town. Uh, sewer is Jackson MUA. Uh, we already have approval from them to provide sewer to the site, uh, within their sewer, sewer area. Uh, this particular area is within their sewer service area.
And Brian, just to, to confirm, the entire building itself is in Jackson Township, correct?
That is correct.
There's only parking that's in the Lakewood lots?
Correct. It's, it's only the, the area that's in the bottom left-hand corner of the, of the property on a, basically a triangle. Part, part of the parking and, and the one access, uh, that was Adam's initial foray into, uh,
So, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
If you would, can you go into some of the questions raised by our planner about his jurisdiction? Who collects, uh, whose buyer district is charged with the improvement? Just to put all that, that kind of.
Sure.
Generally, historically, the process is, uh, usually the majority where the building resides. Uh, sorry, was there a question?
Mr. Chairman, i- if I might, the, the concern here is the Jackson Township Planning Board acts on the application. Is it necessary for them to go to Lakewood Township Planning Board and get approval for the improvements that are in Lakewood Township? That's question one. Fair question.
We've obtained approvals from Lakewood Township.
For this set of plans?
Yes.
Okay. Could you provide a copy of the resolution, the plans that were submitted to the board for their records?
Yes.
Next question is, it may not be a board issue, but it's an issue for the municipality that I believe belongs in the resolution, which is, which municipality takes jurisdiction over building permits? Fire safety? Taxation? Inspections? So those are things that, I understand generalizations. I think we need to get it specific. Take five minutes and figure out whether it's a law, it's a choice, it's something we'll figure out before we memorialize the resolution. We'll just get all this stuff straight so that there isn't a disconnect when they're out in the field and the zoning officer and the town engineer don't know what to do with the plans that we approved.
Were there any of those items that were just mentioned, listed in the ordinance that was.
In the resolution. Uh, I could pull up the, I believe I have the resolution. I'll double-check it in a second. Um, but the resolution, I, it was always understood that we have to come to Jackson Township. The building is in Jackson Township. The building permits will be from Jackson Township. Uh, and in my, my experience with, even when you have a property that's in two zones, forget that just the, the improvement is in one and not the other. Um, usually where the majority of the building is, where the property is, uh, the townships usually have a resolution from the, from the two governing bodies, which will usually be the, the town council, which will agree who's going to service it for fire, safety, and code. So our, our proposal all along has been, this building is in Jackson Township. We're going to Jackson Township for, you know, soup to nuts. And that is what we plan to do here. Well.
So may I follow that? In the, we have the opportunity, it wasn't submitted, does the Lakewood resolutions that jurisdiction.
So the, it's not the, the jurisdiction of the planning board to decide that? That's our proposal. Should this, should this be approved?
So I'll ask, I'll raise my question. Does the resi- memorializing resolution in Lakewood, if you present that same proposal to Lakewood, would they memorialize? I don't understand. The municipality, the, 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 where it should act here. At least the two municipalities, the municipal attorneys, to the managers, administrators, would see that it was a board between the two boards. I'm quite wide-eyed looking as equal counsel perspective. I don't take any of these. Section to Mr. Pfeffer's articulation, what the new law is particularly in this particular circumstance. Higher.
Mr. Peters, would you concur?
So far, yes.
So far.
Listen, there, there's 100 things that could.
I was just going to ask, is the planning board going to get a full set, copy, and all the related documents that are already presented to a different jurisdiction as part of the deliberation? That's a question.
So it's our testimony, it's the same, Mr. Murphy can confirm. The same exact plans that were submitted here this evening are what was submitted to Lakewood Township.
I understand the testimony, but sometimes you do.
And we have, and we have no objection to submitting.
Provide the resolution.
Right. Okay. Apparently. Thanks, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Brian, can you continue? I'm going to check you on the resolution, I'll get back to you.
Uh, the trash enclosure is in the southwest corner of, of, of the project, uh, basically in the back corner. Uh, that'll be within an enclosure, uh, the, uh, pre-review asked to, to have landscaping on three sides of that, which we will provide. Lighting complies with the requirements, drainage complies with the requirements. Uh, the drainage will be owned and maintained by the property owner. Um, there shall be no outdoor storage permitted on the property. Uh, we're looking for typical business hours. Uh, the loading area, there is a loading area required, a 12 by 35, foot loading area is required, and we have a 12 by 50 on the west side of the building. Uh, there is one variance that, that we're seeking, uh, for the minimum required parking lot setback from a right-of-way. Uh, 20 feet is required, 17 and a half is proposed. And where that is, is right here. Apparently, I'm, I'll never be a surgeon. Um, but the, there is, the parking stalls themselves are over 20 feet. It's just the, the little back out when you, when you pull out, it's just that little portion that, that's over 20 feet. As, uh, as we indicated, there is a basement proposed.
Go away, Mr. Murphy, let's hang on. So you're pointing to the location we need there.
Yes.
Look to me, that was Lakewood Township.
Yes, it is.
Did the Lakewood Township Resolution grant that?
It's not a variance in Lakewood Township.
Different UDO.
Yeah, well, we can't do anything about it. This point of jurisdiction over.
Fair enough.
Noting the fact that, um, if the entire parcel had been in Jackson Township.
Fair enough.
Were in for some reason to clean up some of this, and I know there could be debate about the veracity, the stability, perhaps, you know, the balance of the lot, the annex to Jackson is, finally, that causes some. Then at that point, under Jackson's ordinance, there is.
Yes. Uh, with regard to, to the, to the building, uh, as indicated, basement is proposed. Uh, our architect has an exhibit for the basement, and now that will be laid out. Basically, each tenant is going to be getting a, a cage or, or area for, for storage just for that tenant. And then there'll be a gym that's only for the use of the tenants, and there'll also be a lunchroom area basically for, for the tenants as well.
This, in fairness, may be a question of, you know, Mr. Pfeffer, what has it worked out? But I would presume for ease of enforcement, is that the municipal, Jackson Township, take over, collect taxes, pay for the services, et cetera. If, God forbid, there's an accident and the portion of the parking lot is in Lakewood, they're part of that agreement, we'll also see that jurisdiction to the. They're part of that agreement would also see that jurisdiction to municipal, to municipal emergency services.
It would see the jurisdiction, yes. Not to see the actual property to Lakewood. Yes. The jurisdiction, yes.
Sure.
Right. And that was the same as it was in our 2007 approval. We have.
We had a lot of new folks.
Yeah.
Yep. So ju- just as in 2007, as, as Mr. Peters and, I apologize. Mr. Peters indicated, we would need to restrict the basement, but the nowhere office use only for the storage, the lunchroom and the gym. Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a, uh, somebody who's going to rent this space already?
Not that I know of.
I, I'm not a fan of basements, especially when it comes to parking because uh, you can tell us and all kinds of things about what that basement is going to be used for. But time marches on and, you know, we only have so many people that can look at what's going on in a basement. Um, you're going to be asking for a variance for parking because there won't be enough parking spaces if you put a basement in this building.
If we have a basement, no. If, if we, if we did restrict the basement, then we have enough parking so that it's not an issue. Um, so the, the basement, as I'm indicating, it, it'll be deed restricted. So any building permits, anything that would have to be pulled in that basement would have to be aligned with, with the ordinance.
Why do you need, you know, we're, we have less and less storage. Things are getting smaller, not bigger. You know, when we used to have big equipment, uh, a ton of paper, uh, a ton of files, those things aren't happening anymore.
You know, I, I, I keep hearing that and I, I keep hearing how, you know, technology is supposed to save us from that. Um, I, I can tell you from my own experience in my office, um, we have regular purges of paper and we literally have to get dumpsters to, to fill the extra paper that, that are just in the offices, let alone what we're actually keeping in files. Um, we have numerous self-storage facilities full of our files, uh, because we're required to keep them for at least seven years. Um, so it's, I, I agree. I, I wish it was actually reality of, but my experience is you still need storage. Uh, whether it's extra equipment or, or your paper or your files, um, you, you still need storage.
Two, two other comments. One, uh, when we get to the, first comment is we have the architect here who's going to talk about, uh, the proposed, uh, sizes of the units. I believe when we get to it, I think there are eight or nine units, the maximum could be per floor. Um, which means the office sizes are not very large, talking about 1,200 square feet, 1,500. Obviously with the, the applicant hopes someone comes and takes the entire floor. But that's also the reality of today's, uh, office use. People want smaller spaces and, and even, you know, a small office. There's not a lot of space in there to store even the basic stuff of paper and, and, and supplies. Um, when we get to the architect, we'll give testimony, we'll show, uh, the small sections in the basement. Um, but I call almost like cage-like storage spaces. Um, we'll get to that shortly. But we understand the concern and we have no, as indicated, we have no problem with the de-restriction or no, uh, no hurt people use other than storage or the caf, yeah, I call cafeteria, but lunch area.
Also, uh, just to bring up also that the basement is actually that volume that we're pulling dirt-wise out of there is actually helping to balance the site. Uh, so we don't have to bring in roughly 5,500 yards of, of, of fill. Um, so that helps also balancing the site and keeping those trucks off the road and bringing fill into the site. Um, because there, there is a good drop-off on the site. Um, there are some waivers that were.
Mr. Chairman, before we get off the parking issue, I, I need a couple of minutes. This is a couple of minute point I'd like to make. If this was a one-story, 60,000 square foot building, it was a one-story building containing the same amount of square footage as the two floors in the basement. If this was one 60,000 square foot building with storage and a gym, we'd provide parking for 60,000 square foot of building space. We wouldn't be talking about deed restricting things. So in order for Mr. Murphy or Mr. Pfeffer to come in here and tell us that the basement's going to be deed restricted, that's an enforcement issue. Okay? We all know what kind of enforcement gets done just about anywhere. Someone comes in, one tenant goes to the building department and says, or to the zoning office, says, I want a zoning permit. I'm going to build an office. What's going to stop them from doing it unless we have either a deed restriction and/or some physical limitation from the architect that would not permit the use of that basement for office space? Quite frankly, the office space calculations for parking are somewhat dated and would assume that you have some storage in those areas. So the idea that we're taking file cabinets and sticking them in the basement means you're putting more people in the office space. So while I don't disagree with the premise that you could somehow restrict this, I don't think we've passed that threshold where, well, we're gonna, we're gonna write it, we're gonna sign a document. That's putting the responsibility back on the town. I want the applicant to take the responsibility to make this almost foolproof for the town. Otherwise, provide the parking because there's nothing after they get a C O for the building that stops them from going into the building department and pulling a permit for a permitted use. Unless we have something in the resolution that specifically states you can't do it or some physical barrier for the basement to be used for that particular type of use. No, my concern is that. I'd have to ask Mr. Murphy what impact it would be if he had to provide 300 parking spaces.
Wouldn't physically fit on the site.
There's no room.
Sure. Yes, Mr. Riker.
The, the reality is it's an amenity for the tenants. Uh, it helps you rent, be able to rent the facility and make it a successful facility. Having those amenities for the tenants saying, you know, we're providing a gym, providing a lunchroom and we're providing your storage. So you don't have to go outside and rent storage exterior and. Yeah. Oh, because it, again, yeah.
Mr. Mr. Riker, I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I think you heard the planner testify that the, the architect has certainly heard our planners' comments regarding enforcement to this time. Think about some of the restrictions and some of your questions. They have the right to present. They want to ask what.
Well, I would like to hear the rest of the amenities list that Mr. Murphy started going into some detail on, because it's nowhere in the application. It just says amenities. So now we've got a lunchroom, a gym. At some point, these things, again, if it was all on one floor, it'd all be office space. So let, let's get a detailed list of what the proposed uses in the building are so we can make a determination. You can't physically restrict access to a lunchroom or a gym like you can to a storage area. So at some point in time, someone could come in, turn it into office space.
There was a statement of operations. It didn't reference exactly what the basement was going to be used for, but.
Not a gym.
No, and the, and the architect tonight has, has a floor plan for the, for that basement that, that has the layout. So it'll be exactly what we're showing.
The date of. Now, hold on one second. I think it was December of 20?
December 20?
About a, yeah, about a year ago.
Then why wasn't it included in our package? Why didn't you provide that documentation?
Well, copy the resolution?
Yeah.
And this is.
One more question, please?
Yes.
How, Mr. Peters, how short are they on parking for three stories?
It's okay to ask Mr. Murphy that question.
How short, how short are you, Mr. Murphy?
Before Mr. Murphy, yeah, he's going to answer in one second. I just clarify. So again, the, the ordinance reads a certain way. I just want Mr. Murphy to, to explain if we're using the basement as, as office space, which we are not, it's one calculation. But if it's used as storage only, de-restricted, it's a different calculation. Again, I'm sorry if I can just clarify.
So the parking that we're provided, we're providing 213 stalls on the site. Uh, if we, we don't count the basement, 205 is required. If we do, then 300 is required.
And again, well, please understand that even storage may have some parking requirement. It may not be listed in the ordinance. But as Mr. Pfeffer is making the point of tying the use of the basement for storage to a tenant, it's a little different than if it's just storage and Mr. Ricardi can go over and put his junk in the basement. Because then there would be a parking requirement associated with that, which is why I think in order to get this right, so we don't leave sort of a leaky bag for the people who have to enforce it once they leave the board, it's important to get a detailed statement of operations for the basement.
Let's say, uh, they were proposing this, uh, building to have three stories. On the first story was the gym, the lunchroom and storage. And then the other two stories were office buildings. How many parking spaces would be required?
Well, again, I think Mr. Murphy and Mr. Pfeffer would try to make the same argument. The idea that a basement doesn't normally have the same access points or the same salability because it's below ground and normally you only have, um, smaller windows for sunlight or, or use. I, I think the construction of a basement is different, or the tenant fit out for a basement is different than the tenant fit out for something above grade.
But that leads me to think also of if this is being used with a gym and, and a lunchroom, does the egress need to change?
Well, we're gonna, I think we're gonna get that from the architect, but that's sort of the, unfortunately, the detailed description of the uses use the phrase common amenities. And then the original architect's plans show the basement is just blank and 20,000 square feet. So we brought our point up, so to speak, and I think we'd need to let the applicant explain, hopefully to our satisfaction, what they're proposing.
I'll let the architect get into the nuts and bolts of the basement, but I, I'll, I'll show you the exhibit for the basement that we have.
Could you just mark that? I'm sorry. That's A3. Thank you.
There's only two accesses to the basement by stairwell and the elevator goes all the way down. There is no windows in the basement at all. Each of the tenant's storage areas are, are assigned to each tenant on these first and second floor. And then you have a, a lunchroom and you have the gym, again, only for the use of the tenants. So the argument that we're looking at is what traffic or parking requirement does this create? It's the same people that are on the first and second floor. There's no new parking being created by this basement.
Wouldn't there be employees down there? If you have a cafeteria?
No, it, it's only tables. It's not food preparation or anything like that. You bring your lunch, it gives you somewhere to sit.
Can you just read off the approximate square footage of each of the gym and the cafeteria over there?
No, no employees. Now, being no employees, you'll, you'll have a site super on, on, on site for sure. You know, it, it, again, it's, and the storage areas, only storage, it's not like it's a warehouse. It's, it's only storage for those particular tenants for upstairs. So it's not like you're renting out separate storage or, or something like that where, where you actually have employees associated with this. It's the guys working upstairs, they need more paper, it needs a file from the filing cabinet, it goes downstairs again. That's the, the setup for this. As I indicated, there's no windows down here. It's not going to be a very hospitable place, so to speak.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question.
Yes.
Can you name the, the last time you had an application that you testified for where you asked for a deed restriction on a basement?
Um, I've had I had one up in Bloomfield.
How long ago?
And I had one in, oh, how long ago? Uh, about a year and a half ago, somewhere in that area. And I had another one in.
And I, I don't, at the risk of a pop quiz, how many applications have you testified for in your career? Hundreds, thousands?
Thousands.
That's what I'm just trying to understand. Is this a unique request that's unusual?
No, it's again, it, it's, it's, there was a, a window there after the, after the recession of '07 where you couldn't give away office space. Um, there is many empty office buildings in certain areas and certain corridors in the state, you still have that condition where, you know, big pharmaceutical companies move out of their offices and they're still sitting. Um, and they're still trying to figure out how to repurpose those. Uh, obviously this isn't, you know, 200,000 square foot in an office building. Um, but again, it, it's, again, it's competition. It's, you know, trying to make it a marketable and successful site by providing those, those amenities to respective tenants. So you're trying to draw tenants in.
No, I appreciate that. And the reason I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, I'm just trying to apply intellectual honesty to any application. Just intellectual honesty to the conversation. So I just want to ask a question, Mr. Peters. Is this a traditional request that you typically see in an applicant to have a deed restriction on a basement? Or is it unusual? Do you see these often in your travels? Because th- this is the world that you folks are in. Well, I, I don't think it's normal. I, I think the, the applicant needs to describe for us how this won't generate the need for additional parking. If they do that to the board's satisfaction, I think they're in a position to get, for the board to grant a waiver. If not, then they have some changes that may need to be made to the plan, whether they ask for relief, whether the board accepts the deed restriction and whatever the architect's going to talk to us about. Generally speaking, no, we haven't seen a lot of them. Um, is it the first time we've ever seen it? No. Quite frankly, this is an efficient use of the building because again, if, if this was a 60,000 square foot, one-story building, the lunchroom, the storage area, it'd be part of an office building. It'd be 60,000 square feet and that's what you do the parking calculations off of. But it's not on the first floor. It doesn't have floor-to-ceiling glass. It doesn't have reasonable access to it. So I don't want to make the applicant's case, but just, you know, I'm not sure we have all the information yet. Brian, before I forget, what's the date of that drawing?
Uh, 11/11/2020.
No revision date?
All unrevised, 10/18/21.
That's today, right? So that's not been submitted to the board for review?
It has not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
But as indicated, we have two stairwell accesses. We have an elevator access. The stairwell access is, is required for fire code. Uh, the central corridor is required for fire code. Um, as indicated, each one of these storage units are assigned to the tenant's space upstairs. We also have obviously a utility room, uh, and sprinkler room in here as well. And we have the gym and the cafeteria. Uh, by cafeteria, I just mean a lunchroom essentially. Uh, there's no, no preparation. I'm sorry, sir?
I think there's a spring, there's one other. Brian, just clarify. I think there's one other room that was labeled besides for mechanicals. I'm sorry. I think there was one other room besides for that one mechanical room. There was another.
Oh, yeah. The spring, there, there's a small sprinkler room also, right, right off the, the utility room. Separate entrance. Again, there's no windows. There's only the stairwell access other than the elevator that comes down, the central corridor. And, you know, there, there's basically long hallways so that they, we're stacked with the storage area. It's not really conducive to much, to produce. It's not really conducive to much, to produce.
So Mr. Ricardi has a question.
How big is the gym?
The gym is 1,676 square feet.
How big is the lunchroom?
Lunchroom is 2,705 feet.
And the lunchroom has no facility at all, no microwaves, no water, no, any bathrooms?
Probably a vending machine, something like, no, there's no, no bathrooms down here. No.
So no showers in the gym?
No, no. Vending machine. I'm sorry?
If I go down, eat my sandwich and I have to go potty, I gotta run up.
Gotta go upstairs.
Again, the intent of this basement is not for, for real use. It's for storage and some small amenities for the, for the office space upstairs.
I do understand that, but I had a building just like it, you know, that had a gym in the middle of it. Truth is that you're sending your amenities downstairs and you're walking through halls to get to these two rooms.
Sure.
No way to wash your hands. It's a...
One story up.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, ma'am.
It seems to me we, we've done this dance before because we've had some other projects come before us that have requested basements. They didn't have enough parking area and we said no. I, I've been in this town for over 50 years now. I've lived here. I have office buildings in this town. Things change. People move. People change. Ownerships change. And, and I have no great faith in no proposal that will possibly give us a place where there just isn't going to be enough parking in the future for the people who are going to be using this facility. It's just, you know, nature abhors a vacuum and when there's empty space somehow they like to fill it. And I don't have a great deal of faith in, in the long-range view that we won't be ending up with parking overflow all over the place because there's just not enough room. And there's, and that's a, that's a lot of parking. That's not just, that's not just 10 spaces. That's a lot of spaces.
Yeah, we're, we're roughly 10 over, almost 10 over now.
That's right.
But, but without that, sure, we're, we're definitely deficient if we're including the basement.
Like 100 spaces short.
And I just noticed a Class II member that the enforcement will be exceptionally difficult, if not impossible, to ensure compliance with local ordinances. But I would defer to the construction official and the appropriate certificated folks to opine on that, but extremely difficult.
It's the simple stuff.
I'll, I'll let the architect address this.
We have a lot of testimony still to get to. We're not trying to skirt the issue.
I actually addressed the loading, the, the loading dock that's required is 12 by 35 for this size of building. We're providing a 12 by 50 and it's along that west side of the building. It's a striped loading dock that basically invents adjacent to the building. And again, it, it's an office building, so we're going to be looking at a Staples truck pulling up or something along those lines. Nothing, you know, truck to trailer wise or, or anything like that. We have approval from the fire department. Police department had a couple of simple comments that, you know, simply we'll, we'll address. The fire department is satisfied with what we've done. We've made the changes that they requested. Ocean County Plan Board, we have approval. Jackson Township Plan and Board, we have preliminary approval from. And if you'd like, I'll go through the couple of waivers that we have. There's a waiver from environmental impact statement. Again, the site's not developed. We're completely developed around this. We're on a divided county road. The Environmental Commission indicated that they, they had no concerns. The current rate turn, rate turn curb radii for parking lots of 25 or more, 15-foot radius is proposed. We have 10-foot on the exteriors and 15 or, or eight-foot on the interiors. Again, we have turning templates that show that the fire truck, everyone can get around the site adequately. You know, we, could we provide the, the radius? Yes. But then we lose parking stalls, which obviously I, I think the, the reduction in the radius since it really doesn't impact the emergency services traversing the site. I think the benefit of having the additional parking stalls outweighs that. No parking shall utilize the entrance or exit drives, which it does not, or major circulation drives. We have nothing on, you can see both sides of the entrance, entrances are green. We don't have anything on there. I guess if you consider these main circulation drives, we do have parking on those. Pretty common in town. I think you can almost go to any site and, and you'll see a very simple setup with parking out of, that backs onto those tight lanes. With regard to the buffers in the rear of the property, there is a residential zone. 35-foot buffer is required. We have a 25-foot tree buffer along the rear. We have another 12 feet, which brings us to 37 feet to the fence for the, for the basin. And we have a full 92 feet if you include basically from the property line to where the parking lot is. But though we don't have 35 feet of, of complete trees, you know, we can plant additional, I guess, along that edge, along the basin. I think we meet the intent of the ordinance of providing a sufficient buffer. Also, the, the residential lots there are very deep. See on the, on the aerial. And the houses are roughly 800 feet to the rear of the property. Also, with regard to, there is a 10-foot landscape strip required on the rear and side yards. I believe technically we meet that. We're not planting along that rear line because we have a 25-foot buffer that we're, that's going to remain. Along the east side is another buffer that, that's going to stay. Again, that's 25 feet as well, well in excess of the 10. On the west side, we have 10 feet planted along, along the parking stalls. And then again, we have 25 feet of trees that will remain. Certainly, we could comply with this waiver by clearing 25 feet of trees and putting back 10 feet. I don't think it makes sense to anybody here. So I request that waiver.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. It's an apartment building. It's, it's not a residential zone. Right. Residential use, not a zone.
Mr. Chairman, does any questions or, or from Mr. Murphy, from either the board members or your professional? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. So, Mr. Murphy, as it relates to the 35-foot buffer, you're going to plant additional trees?
Yes, we'll comply.
And in a fashion so as to provide a 35-foot buffer and not request a waiver?
Yes, there is 25 feet of existing vegetation that will remain and then we'll provide another 10.
I, I heard that. So I just want to know how we're going to do it.
Sure.
With request to the side and rear property line, 10-foot unbroken landscape strip, is there a physical limitation to providing another row of trees? Or I'm trying to understand on the side property line, why you can't get 10 feet?
We, we have 10 feet on, on the west side where that, that is cleared to the property line. We're, we're putting back 10 along those parking stalls. And then the other areas, basically, we're keeping at least 25 feet of existing trees.
Okay. And while I understand this is a permitted use and a ratable along county line road with regards to the curb radii, if you provided the curb radii, have less parking spaces and provided less building space, you could comply with that, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, charging stations?
We will be providing some of this.
Thank you.
Yes, if no more questions of Mr. Murphy, I think we'll go on to the architect, Mr. Montefiore.
Oh, yeah. You know what? Seeing the hour, we're going to take a break.
That's fine.
Mr. Rafferty, before you take the five minutes.
Hi.
Hi.
We're number four, and I understand the hour. I, I was speaking to Mr. Borden about your November 1st agenda. Apparently, the, the only lengthy application is not going forward that night.
Know something that I don't know.
Well, then, that's why I asked Ian to come up with me. Ian? The, I was just talking about the November 4th agenda and there was an application you said, November 1st, I'm sorry.
I was just wanting to understand the number four was maybe going to be moved to the 15th, Sean. I, I was just on a periphery of your conversations.
So, so Mr. Rafferty, here's the issue where we're at right now with that. Board has had several communications from the, that applicant's attorney making certain demands, quite frankly. I think I'm speaking mutually. So I need to be able to speak with the threatening litigation on others. So that's part of what the executive set, excuse me, what's part of the executive session is going to be. So while from 30,000 feet, you're correct. Mr. Rafferty, I can't, you know, I can't make a recommendation yet to move the application to the first. Specifically, what we could do, Mr. Chairman, though, I don't want to make promises on behalf of the board that can't be. What we could do, though, if your client is okay with that, is if the board would be inclined to move the application to the first, so long as the applicant understands that you might hear from me in a week and indicate it may be, have this, have to be carried again to some other day, will be announced. I, I can make, I have no problem making that, whether it's a case. Sorry to continue to talk, but I know your client is here and I wanted to understand that as I sit here today on behalf of my client, the board, I can't make the promise that you'll go on the first.
That's understood. And we, we would only be heard on the first, hopefully, if that significant application is moved. If it goes forward, then we probably won't get heard and will be moved to December, it looks like. But we understand, but just in case there's that opening, we want to take advantage of it.
Then I have, as long as the applicant understands and I have no issues, so as long as the board is okay with that, with that understanding, we're fine. Are you okay? So, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may, application number four this evening, Block 401, Lot 9, Wrightville Road, LLC. That matter has been carried to November 1st, 2017, meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board without the requirement of notice. Applicant has waived time through December 31st.
That's fine.
Okay. Can I get a motion? Carry this, Logan 1?
So moved.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. Five-minute break. Okay. We're back in session.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what I would like to do now, so as I indicated, we're going to call our architect. We hear the board loud and clear. You guys have some questions, some concerns. I, I would like to get through the testimony of the architect and, and as well as the traffic because a lot of that is tied into what may or may not be tweaked in this application. I understand we're not going to be finishing up. We're not going to ask the board for a vote this evening. But I would like to get through this testimony. We're not going to take very long. Just see if there are any other concerns that the board may have and hopefully you'll see the, the rest of the application and, and like it. At this time, Mr. Gerda, if you can, or Mr. Montefiore?
James J. Montefort, Architect, 733 Route 35, Ocean Township, New Jersey. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey as well as four other states. I graduated in, I think, 1993 and I've had a practice since then. I have seven architects. I do work all up and down the Jersey Shore. Multiple type buildings, high-rises, office buildings, houses. I go additions if you want one. Yes, I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing I, I did, I did hand out to the board, I put on everyone's desk, I hand out, I just like to mark that as A4. They're just a set of, of architectural renderings. So the board has that and that's just for the record. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
What is the date?
Did not keep a copy for myself. Well, most of the sheets are what was submitted. The only two new sheets are the basement plan and the rendering, which is not dated. It's just an exhibit. Okay, so again, we have a two-story building. It's 20,196 square feet. On the first floor, 19,234 square feet. On the second floor totaling 39,430. The design is a contemporary design. It's mostly glass. It has synthetic or metal wood and it has some accents that are like a brushed aluminum. It's a Class A office building and the building is designed in a way so that we don't end up with a big building that's not being occupied. And the, the idea here is to create smaller tenants with a big office feel. So you're a smaller tenant, but now you feel like you're in a beautiful Class A office building instead of in a small building on the side of the road. We have a beautiful, large lobby. It's approximately 1,300 square feet. It's two stories. It has a two-story element when you walk in. So you see up. There's a corridor that runs through. This is showing an option if a tenant were to take two spaces and make their space bigger. For the most part, we're, we're proposing a total of 16 tenants at the max and one or two if it, somebody takes the whole building. I also have provided entrances in the front of the building and in the back for the first-floor tenants so they can have alternate access to their individual suites on the first floor. And that's indicated on the And that's indicated on the elevations, and you can see it in the 3D rendering I provided. So, there's a little covered area there with the two doors, and it would be like Suite A, Suite B, along the front and then the back. And this is a layout of the second floor, it would have a common corridor that runs through here as required by the code, has elevator in the center. There's a bank of bathrooms I have on this floor, and then all the tenants would use those bathrooms, or they could put bathrooms in, will provide wet columns in the structure. So that if somebody wanted a bathroom, they can add one into their space. Again, this is, this is kind of for, you know, for tenants to be selected, so we're just giving you an idea of what might happen in the building at its maximum of tenants.
Just a question on that second floor.
Yep.
So, you have eight tenants on the second floor, you have, would appear to be four air quotes.
That's what's required at 200 per square foot per tenant, but there will be more bathrooms, it's just suggested layout. I wasn't sure if we would end up with gang bathrooms for everyone, or we would end up with them inside the space.
Yeah, I was just comparing the first floor to the second floor.
Yeah, we have individual bathrooms. We'll meet the code no matter what, don't worry about that. Okay, so I apologize for this drawing coming late, but we had a meeting last week, and the concern about the basement did come up. So, I tried to prepare this design as to what my client was thinking would be very nice to have for the building. One thing that, that we really thought would be, well, this was actually kind of my, I take the name for it. Amenities are big, so in order to get tenants to want to come here, you want to give them something that's different than other office buildings. So, by providing a place for them to, let's say, workout, or have lunch and not, you know, have people cooking in their office and stinking the whole office up with lunch. It gives you a place to, to go and get out of your office and sit in the cafeteria. There might be some like sofas in here, we could sit down, have a cup of coffee, just relax for a minute or two before you go back to work. As far as storage, I split them up, kind of, kind of in different sizes for different sized tenants, but, you know, I figured there might be bigger tenants and smaller tenants. So, I just kind of split it up, each tenant would get a storage space. I could tell you that I could use a storage space, because in my business, I collect samples, I collect, you know, we get emails and for some reason, they get printed. I, you know, and then they end up in the files, so our files are getting bigger instead of smaller, and we're pretty technically advanced. We just seem to be collecting a lot of stuff, so it's a good amenity to have a place for people to put their stuff on the site, so they don't have to leave the site to go get their dead files. And, and it's just, we feel it's a great amenity. The other reason that I thought the basement was a good idea is because of the amount of fill on this sloped site, we would be carting off the site. It's actually going to end up costing more money for the client to actually build a basement, most likely. But it does save the moving of earth all over the place, up and down the streets, and it, you know, we need the earth to level the property around. Now, definitely no windows because of ADA, we have to be able to roll into the building, so the slab is basically ungrade. So, there won't be any windows down here, so natural light is not going to happen, so it's not that desirable. If anybody wanted to put offices down here, I just don't feel it's going to be a desirable place to do that.
Can you just discuss egress and stairwells in and out of the basement?
Yeah, well, there is a corridor that runs through, meets the requirement for the 100 foot in each direction, to the safe stairwells that go up, travel up stairs, they discharge. Two of them, they discharge, let's see, one discharges directly outside, and the other discharges and then bows outside. Again, the building, I have not given it a total building code review, but that usually happens when I'm doing construction drawings and I get mechanical and structural engineers involved. So, at this point, it's a design of a building, and it meets, it's going to meet all the proper building code requirements. Did you mark this? Well, we have, we have a lot of mechanical units up there, that would be a question for the client. I believe what?
We've had some discussions, and when we come back, next time, we'll address that, but we have had the discussions already. And I think the last is just, which is part of the A4, is just the rendering, that's already been premarked.
Yes, I just wanted to show the board that this is our rendering, and we have this, the brown is the simulated wood product. And then the silver part would be the brushed metal panels, as round, as well as these two round metal columns. And the actual bay windows stick forward of the facade, so it's, it's not a flat front. That's why we did the 3D, so you could see that these all pop out, so it gives the building a lot of interest. And it should be a beautiful structure out on the street there.
You alluded to the fact that to keep people from cooking in their offices, that's where you put the cafeteria downstairs. That tells me that you expect them to be cooking downstairs.
Well, there would be a microwave probably down there for heating lunches, I know what happens, and we just have a microwave. So, there might be vending machines, we didn't really lay out the cafeteria. Probably, I would think, it would be a nice feature to have some vending machines down there, a microwave, a refrigerator, basic stuff for your.
So, you're putting people in a downstairs room with no outside egress with mechanicals?
No, this building is fully egressible, it meets the code. What do you mean, no mechanicals?
No, I said, you're putting, you're putting machines in a room, you're putting a microwave in a room.
Well, you have to.
And the only way out is through the building.
That's, that's correct, that's how, that's how these type, that's how these type of buildings work. I have a one-hour rated corridor, and once you discharge out of this room, you're in a safe area, and you discharge to each exit. This meets the building code. There will be heat and cool in this space, and this space, you can't, like, not heat and cool it.
Not what I said. Thank you.
That's not safer, because your second means egress is further away. Right, so now you have to travel further from this room rather than going left or right. Oh. I'd have to ask the site engineer.
We would.
I'd have to ask the site engineer. They, you come in, you come in the front, you have, come in the stairs, you come in the other side. I have, I have, on the first floor, there's four entrances into this building, four accessible entrances for fire. It's a very safe building, it's non-combustible, it's a Class A, non-combustible building, it meets all the fire codes. Yeah, but all that's addressed in the building code. It's all been taken into consideration over years and years of developing the building code and the fire code. And the building department is not going to give me a permit if they're not comfortable with this set of plans. And it's going to be a plan review, it's going to go through everything, and the fire marshal is going to look, everybody is going to have their hands on it. It's been, it's been through fire. Yeah. That's, yes.
Or that's four plans. That specific four plan innovation.
Everything I have here is what was submitted.
Okay, and that's the end of that conversation.
No, but we will, we will be all of the.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, as I indicated, the basement, we're going to be looking at, come back again before the next meeting, we're asking for a vote.
I think we're having some constructive discussion.
Yes.
That maybe needs to be looked at.
Yes.
Or the next time you guys come back.
Yes, yes, and I was just going to indicate that we will look at all of these concerns, including possible, possible other egress from the basement. We have to look at the design, and it's important to say that we, we hear you loud and clear, and we will address it.
You know, simply, my layman's opinion, I would take the cafeteria and the gym and shift it over to the left, closer to the stairwells.
I can do that, I, it's my, it's my professional opinion that it's not safer over there. That's my, my opinion. Because you have to discharge to the, this, you're closer to one stair. Now, if there's a fire, you don't have, you have to go all the way to here, whereas if you're here and there's a fire here, you go that way. That's why you distribute staircases the way you do, and then the code addresses that by telling you, you need to be half the distance away from each other. So, they're trying to separate the egress. Now, I might be able to help by adding maybe another staircase in the middle of the building, if that makes everybody happy.
No, direct egress would make me happy.
We have direct egress.
No, you don't.
You come up the stairs, you have a direct egress, well, that it?
Okay.
Okay, so the room. It's not my opinion, it's the code, that's what I designed by the code. I'm not talking down to you.
Are there any other questions for the architect?
It's just the proposed area where common bathrooms could be, I'm really thinking they're going to probably be, and each suite will have their own bathroom. Yeah. That's correct.
So, the two floor plans, I think they were just depicting what could be, we were showing the maximum, so the maximum are eight per floor, but it would never have more than 16 tenants. It could be that one tenant takes the entire floor, takes the entire building, we, exactly. But I believe what we were showing is that the minimum park, the minimum bathrooms are being shown as common on the site and being depicted. Very well, an individual tenant may say they're taking half a floor and they want their own bathrooms, which again, would be the code as well.
Per floor?
Right, 16.
16 per?
Yes, that would be, that's the most.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Montefort, the plans got blown down such that I can't read the dimensions on the elevations. Looks like the first floor is about a 14-foot ceiling height?
That's floor to floor.
Pardon?
I think that's floor to floor. That's, that's floor to floor.
Okay.
And then it's 13-foot floor to floor to the roof deck.
And then I saw on the site plans, it appears that the basement floor to finish floor is about 12 feet?
I don't have that number.
I'm just trying to understand how, what kind of ceiling height we have in the individual floors. Thank you.
So, no further questions of architect, we'll just call Mr. Kennel through traffic. Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Kennel, thank for raising your right hand.
Before the board represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and through the chairman, your credentials to his satisfaction?
Yes, Scott Kennel, K E N N E L, with McDonough and Ray Associates, located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquan. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, I have 35 years of traffic and transportation planning experience. I've appeared before this board on many occasions, I've also been qualified in 100 other municipalities, and also by the New Jersey Superior Court as a traffic expert. Thank you. So, my office prepared a traffic study that was submitted to the board, dated November 192020. And I'll just run through our findings, and then I'll, I want to hear more testimony on the parking aspect of this. But traffic counts were conducted in October and September of 2020, along County Line Road, at both South New Prospect Road and at Brewers Bridge. And based on that data, we adjusted the traffic volumes to be balanced between the two intersections, since Brewers Bridge is located to the west of this site and South New Prospect is to the east. As far as traffic generation, as is typical, we consulted the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, and we're estimating approximately 50 peak hour trips during the morning and afternoon for the proposed office building. And again, we utilized 41,000 square feet, where it was just, I guess, testified the building's been slightly reduced, around 39,600 square feet. But basically, then assigned those site trips to the area roadway network based on the existing traffic pattern, existing roadway network and location of neighborhoods. Consistent with the Ocean County Planning Board Protocol, we considered a 2030 design year. And with that, we added traffic growth to the base traffic volumes in 2020. And we also included traffic volumes from a recently approved office building on Brewers Bridge Road, just south of County Line Road. I think I testified on that approximately three months ago. But taking all that into consideration, as far as the site driveway is concerned, we have two right-in, right-out driveways. This design has been presented and reviewed by Ocean County and approved, as far as the number of driveways and the geometry that has been presented to you. And the driveways are expected to operate at good levels of service, level of service B for exiting movements. Well, you know, well within accepted traffic engineering parameters. As far as the intersection of Brewers Bridge Road and West County Line Road, the intersection will operate at overall level of service C in the morning, with or without this development, and overall level of service D in the afternoon peak hour. As far as the intersection of West County Line Road and New Prospect Road, the intersection during the morning peak hour currently operates an E-level service for the no build and will continue as an E-level service in a no build. And it's projected to operate a level service D for the PM peak hour with or without this development. We had suggested and included in our analysis a, a recommendation to Ocean County. They have not acknowledged whether they're going to accept that, but they can improve that, the morning operations from a E-level service to a C-level service by dedicating 10 additional seconds to the southbound approach. That's, that's the heaviest movement during the morning peak hour, people making the left turn, heading towards Lakewood. So again, this traffic study has been presented by the, to Ocean County and they have reviewed and approved it. As far as parking, I, we've had a lot of discussion on that and based on the township ordinance and just reviewing the two stories of office space, we comply with the ordinance. The question comes about, as raised by Mr. Peters, as far as you still have storage space in the basement. When I was reviewing this and reviewing the comments, I was trying to think of, this is, this building is kind of unique to Jackson Township. I was trying to think of a single building, office building with this much square foot, office space. You know, and it has taken into consideration that there's a lot of common space, the lobbies, and there's multiple tenants. And in the industry, ITE as well as adjoining towns have parking rates of, or parking standards of four spaces per 1,000 square feet in lieu of the Jackson Township standard of five, which is, in my opinion, conservative. And go further, ITE data, which is pre-COVID, which, you know, there's likelihood that parking demand for office space will be reduced with people having larger work areas and people telecommuting and going in two or three days a week versus five days a week could result in, you know, less parking demand for office space. But pre-COVID ITE data indicates that the average parking rate for over 148 sites they studied was 2.4 parking spaces or vehicles per 1,000 square feet and the 85th percentile is 3.3. Again, much lower than the township ordinance. But looking at the basement plan that's just recently been developed, there's approximately 9,200 square feet of storage area. So if I consider that storage area just general office, not that we're going to provide office down there, and you consider the industry standard of four parking spaces or 1,000 square feet, that will result in demand of approximately 200 vehicles and we have 213 parking spaces. So again, it's my opinion, just based on industry standards, the type of building here, which has multiple tenants, a lot of common space within the first and second floors, that the 213 parking spaces will be more than adequate to support this building, even if the board is to grant, to allow us have storage in the basement, which accounts for approximately 9,200 square feet. Thank you.
So again, at this point, Mr. Chairman, unless the board has any other comments or concerns.
I just want to commend the architect. This is an important strip of Jackson Township and it's a beautiful building. And to see something like this come into our town, I'm very pleased to see it and it's beautifully done. And I think it will enhance the, the environment and right as you're coming into Jackson, very, very nicely done. I'm still going to say I'm not happy with the basement, but I'm very happy with the building.
Thank you.
I agree, perhaps you could contact the prior applicant.
Duly noted. Mr. Chairman, can I, as we're going to carry and go to another meeting, can we just see if there's anybody in the audience here to make any, any public comments? I don't believe.
I'll open it up, I can see anyone, if anyone cares to comment about this application, please step up to the microphone. Seeing no one.
So this time I would ask the board if we could carry it and tell them at the next available meeting for us to.
So, Mr. Chairman, after the discussion off the record with Mr. Borden, I feel assured that that November 1st meeting would be available for the majority of this testimony. I guess before the board comments yea or nay, I would ask Mr. Feffer, could you be prepared with additional submissions?
Right, I just want to check because I would have, by the end of this week, I didn't need to revise.
We will be able to get it in 10 days before, so I think if we made any other revisions, we will be able to get it back into the board. But for the November 1st meeting.
All right, can I get a motion to carry this application, block 7402 lots 23 Jackson Office Complex LLC to the November 1st meeting?
Is that the requirement for the notice applicant has waived time through December 31st though? So move.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Ms. Britto? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Thank you. Next application, block 1220, block on Jackson Baptist Church, Inc.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. An application for preliminary final major site plan approval. The applicant is proposing to construct a 9,125 square foot building in addition to the existing 13,000 square foot church. Mr. Peters and Mr. Gertner might have a little bit more information on it. When this was originally submitted, the question came up as far as the permitted uses. Specific, I think the gymnasium raised some concerns, but they had since gone to the board of adjustment. They've gotten an interpretation that the uses are considered permitted and they're at the, at the proper board. The application will require variance approval for a new subdivision side yard setback as well as building height. So of course, some testimony from the applicant regarding those, those variances. Environmental provisions indicated no concerns as of March 3rd. The existing building will be subject, or the utility service, the existing building will be subject to the MUA, Jackson Township MUA review and approval. Some testimony from the applicant regarding the utilization of the proposed building. Site access will be, is not being affected by the, by the proposal. And some additional parking or building addition is being provided and covered, portico is also, also, also proposed. That's all this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have a report dated April 27th of this year. As it relates to jurisdiction, Mr. Clea is correct. We, professionals, Mr. Gertner, Mr. Clea and myself, looked at the application, had a concern regarding the individual aspects of the proposed improvements and asked the applicant to appear before the zoning board of adjustment for an interpretation or it was, was it determination of zoning officer determination?
Interpretation.
Yeah. The zoning board did in fact interpret that what is being proposed this evening is in fact a permitted use or permitted conditional use. And so the board does rightly retain jurisdiction to this application as a permitted use. I'm sure we'll hear some testimony with regards to what's being proposed. Mr. Clea indicated two variances for minimum side yard setback, maximum building height. I believe there may be two variances required for the height of the sign and the sign setback. And I'd ask the applicant to address the comments in our report, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for, twice, for, for, I'm hitting the wrong button. For, for, for further clarification, what the zoning board did is determine that the use of the classrooms and gyms and shower as proposed by the applicant, so long as it's specifically related to the applicant's beliefs and the educational purpose of the entirety of the ministry or congregation, that those uses as defined would be permitted in this particular building.
Was it?
That was it.
Great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry for the long wait.
That's, that's quite all right. It's good to be here. Robert Schaefer here on behalf of the, the applicant, the Jackson Baptist Church, Inc. The application before the board tonight is fairly straightforward, it's a minor site plan. It's actually an amended pool for phase two. There was, as noted in Mr. Peters' report, the, the application has had a variety of different pools of the course of years, 2003, 2005, 2011. There actually is an approval in place for a, possibly a 9,000 square foot addition in title phase two. One of the reasons why we have to come back before the board is that the footprint of that building changed a bit, it added about 45 square feet. Architectural change a bit related to that and was the, was a couple of variances associated with that height of the building as well as a setback for the building as well. So those are, as a result of those changes, we're back before the board for the minor site plan with the variances that were delineated in Mr. Peters' and also Mr. Clea's report. The, the uses as mentioned by, by Mr. Gertner has been resolved. There's certainly some testimony relating to the proposed uses, uses within the multipurpose room. They were vetted out by the board of adjustment and we have been deemed a permitted use based upon a statement of operations that was actually submitted to the board, which is part of the record. So that was, that statement of operation has not changed at all, that's exactly what was being proposed tonight. I have two witnesses that should be fairly brief, I have one being Mr. Roberts, who was the chairman of the building committee for Jackson Baptist Church. He's a professional planner, but he's not testifying as a professional planner tonight, he wants to give the board an overview of what the proposal is. And then I also have Mr. Jeff Carr will be testifying both as a civil engineer and also as a professional planner as it relates to the, the variances. We do have a virtual tour of the building that Mr., Mr. Roberts will briefly explain. We did provide that to your board secretary, I spoke to your IT person and he's prepared to put that up. Hopefully you have some volume out of it, if not, Mr. Roberts can certainly provide some commentary with respect to this. About two minutes and he'll give the board kind of an overview as to what the building looks like and also the interior of the building as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, prior to that, Ms. Bono, you talked to me earlier in the meeting about just if anyone is in the public domain, live streaming, they have to go some, if you can grab a mic. So I apologize, they have to go somewhere else to watch this. Sorry.
Go to the main planning board page and you go down to the second link. The first link is the documents and it's the second link and that will show the virtual tour for the Jackson Baptist Church.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Roberts, could you just do?
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, for raising your hand, you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and as Mr. Shay Proffer, your affiliation to this application?
Sure, my name is David G. Roberts, R.O.B.E.R.T.S. I live 37 Bayview Avenue in Bayville, but I am a minimum member of Jackson Baptist Church since 2001.
And you're head of the building department or some, or building?
Yes, my, my function as a, as an elder, I was asked to chair the building committee when the, when the church start, became prepared to proceed with phase two, which took quite a long number of years before they were ready to do that. So my capacity was to form a committee and the committee was representative of some, from the trustees, the deacons, the deaconesses and so on, the missions committee, anyone that would have any involvement with the function of the new addition and have input into it. And we've been meeting for about three years, we hired an architect and now we're before you this evening. I also want to thank the board for staying and to hear us, we appreciate that. I just on behalf of the church, thank you very much for, for staying late, appreciate it. And to the professionals as well.
And you, you prepared a virtual tour, is that correct? And I think we just had that up there, but the.
Yes, and really just to try to give you a sneak preview, I, I did this really, the building committee wanted to show the congregation what it would look like. Part of the challenge we've had was trying to come up with a vision for exactly what we had, we knew we had 9,000 square feet to work with. That was what was approved as part of the original site plan application for the phase two building that our, our parking, our drainage, everything was based on 9,000 square feet. So we said, look, we have 9,000 square feet to work with, we know that part of that is a 70 by 100-foot square that the multipurpose room would be in because we knew we could fit a basketball court within that. And right now, our, our youth, when the weather gets cold, they basically have Friendship Hall, which is a room half the size of this, maybe a third of the size of this. They have nowhere else to go and in good weather, they have basketball hoops in the parking lot. But part of the function of this building really was one big room where they, the youth would be able to recreate and also where the entire congregation could fellowship. Phase one, if you remember, was the sanctuary, the original building was built by the congregation in the 70s. And the, and the kitchen that we're still using today is the kitchen that was put in that building 50 years ago originally. I don't even think some of the appliances have been updated. We've now grown since the congregation that built that church back in the 70s. That, that sanctuary addition, which was supposed to be the new worship section of the building, I, I heard it that it, because it was a, phase one was done before I was involved with the building committee, it was over 400 seats. So our, our goal was to have the ability to seat, if we ever grew to that size, to be able to seat that number of people around tables in one room. When we have a dinner now or some kind of a potluck dinner or something, kind of a fellowship type of a function, many times we have to put tables out in the hallway and the sanctuary is fixed theater seating. So it's, it, our old sanctuary, we used to put up folding chairs and it kind of outgrew that. So we needed a, we needed a space for that purpose and we also needed a new kitchen to serve it. And that was really the basis for the multipurpose room, so it really always had, even back in 2005, that's why there was a 70 by 100-foot square in that footprint too, was that we needed that flexible space. You know, the other thing that was, that was considered to be important is that that space needed to have a stage. What we did initially was we visited a number of other churches as a, as a committee to see what they had done. And we, there was a couple of churches in our area that had done the same exact thing that we've done. I think what would really accelerated it though is when we, we hired Michael Campbell. We had never really heard of Michael, we found him online, we found out that he was designing churches all around Monmouth and Ocean County, several here in Jackson. And we were really fortunate to find him and he kind of put, put things to paper that we could see. And then it was when he was able to start organizing the spaces in that footprint that some of the, the outline of that footprint changed. What it really is, is a 70 by 100-foot rectangle that's attached to the original long section in the back, the, the first building. And then a connection to the new phase one so that both our hallways, which are, are off, they're not lined up, both of them are connected to the new building. One is connected long down a hallway and the other goes straight into the, to the main section of the footprint. We also, as part of that process, felt very strongly that we wanted this facility to be available to the public in case of an emergency. And the reason for that is during Superstorm Sandy, because of phase one, we were required to connect into the town water because it was a brand new sanctuary. because it was a brand new sanctuary. We had to effectively abandon our well. The neighbors around us were still on wells and when the power was out for a couple of weeks, it turned out that our pastor and his parsonage was the only residents in the area that had running water and they were actually supplying water to the neighbors. So we had a number of people that are involved in this project that felt very strongly that they wanted to have this facility be available to the, to folks. I always tell the story, and I told this story to the zoning board. I live in Bayville. I was on well. In order to take a shower during Sandy, I had to drive all the way to the other side of Berkeley to take a shower at Central Regional High School because there was no running water for about a week. So that's really what that, that's the secondary function for this. And there will be a backup generator that will allow that, the kitchen, the food pantry and everything else to be available. And we also talked to your EMS and they did tell us that during Sandy, they used Memorial and Liberty as shelters, temporary shelters, but they could have used a smaller venue for special needs because it was, it's required to keep them separate from the general population. So we do feel like that this facility would be a benefit to the township if we ever had and hopefully we never will two weeks without power again. So that's really my background introduction. I'll just, if you want to just let the virtual tool run.
One second, Mr. Roberts, and I'm almost positive Mr. Shay will follow, follow this. I just don't want to have the issues be conflated. That the secondary use you just described, the board's edification is certainly, Mr. Peters and I had heard that before. It is a secondary use. It's a design use. Quite frankly, I'm using my language. It's a good works use.
Exactly.
That the church in servicing the community was it, which is its overriding goal and mission to some extent, worked diligently to design this space such that in case of a community emergency, it could be utilized as such, semicolon, however. Right? The primary use of that space is focused on the actual congregation. For instance, there's going to be no renting the space for, you know, for other outside events, the basketball, to the extent that it's going to be focused, it may be available at some point for a league, but it'll be focused on the kids, the mission, and directed to the educational and religious components of the congregants themselves.
That's absolutely right. Thank you, Mr. Gertner. I would also say that it's not just a basketball court. They'll have a, they'll be able to do volleyball and they'll be able to do whatever, just like any other big space, recreation space. And that's one of the reasons why the ceiling has to be higher. And just to get to the, how that happened, the, basically what Michael came up with was a partial prefab, which is fairly standard, and then had to connect it to the, to the, to the original building. And that's why there was a mezzanine. We wanted, we had one point, wanted to see if we could get a second floor in that 9,000 square feet. And what he recommended is just a partial mezzanine. That gave us one sort of multipurpose where we could divide it up into three classrooms. We could open it up into one larger room and the youth directors could see what was going on down at the, on the main level and what was going on on the mezzanine level. So that's how it evolved and I'll be able to show this to you fairly, I think accurately. What this model is, is a sketchup model that I created, taking the two floor plans, the existing floor plan and the new floor plan, merging them together and then creating the building on top of it on a Google Earth map. So you can kind of get a feel of what it would look like and we actually walk you through that and it runs for two minutes. We can run that now if you could. And if we don't hear any volume, I will narrate it. Okay, so it looks like, well, I'll narrate it. This is really just a, an overview. That's the parking lot existing as we pan over it. You can see I removed some of the roof and some of the walls so you can see down inside. So what you're coming down on top of now is the original building and the Phase One sanctuary. You can see the seating in the lower right-hand corner. That's the, that's the existing sanctuary and the portico that we are putting over the front door just for the, to protect people as they're coming in for the elements. Now we're down inside. That's the sanctuary to the left. The education wing, which is the older building, is down the hallway to the right and we're walking down the hallway with the two bathrooms on the right that are part of Phase One. And these doors would typically now bring you out outside and over to the area where the existing picnic area is. There's a door to the right that leads to a, an outdoor space and I'll explain that in a minute. Now we're into the main space. That's a stage on the left and this is the floor plan that Michael Campbell came up with. This is the big, the big room, the 70 by 100. You can see we were able to just about fit a high school size basketball lining on that. We anticipate a hardwood floor. So it can be used for serious recreational basketball or volleyball, just like a small school gym. That's a, coming back the other way. You see the mezzanine up top and the two bathrooms, one on each side. And then the kitchen is in this, the connector. The connector is one floor. The mezzanine is a half floor over the main room. That's a much larger kitchen than we have now and it would be completely fitted as a, pretty close to a commercial kitchen. And then this is the space and the reason we had to do this is because the pastor's windows are on the left in the old building. If we put the new addition butt up against that building, they would lose their windows. And that's pretty much it. I mean, that's the extent of the addition. It's really the main, main floor, the main room and then under the mezzanine or the bathrooms and then over the mezzanine is a, is some additional classroom space. One of the other reasons we needed that is that right now the choir rehearses, everything happens in the sanctuary. The choir rehearses in the sanctuary. The, when they have like a Juana Club, which is similar to the pioneers of Discover Clubs, which are clubs for age, kids of various ages from the community that come in, in the middle of the week. They, everything happens in the sanctuary. Even the Vacation Bible School has to have their performance in the sanctuary. So that new building will be able to carry out a lot of those functions right now that are currently, we're kind of making do using the hallway and the sanctuary. And that's pretty much the description of the building as concisely as I can give it to you. So thanks for listening. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can as the, not as the architect, but as the chairman of the Building Committee. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a stand, are there stands for parents doing?
You mean like bleachers? There, I think there's, I think there's a bench along one wall.
Just around and I guess maybe the mezzanine.
They, I'm sure some of the, some folks will watch from the mezzanine too, if there's any kind of, I suspect it's just going to be kids running around on the floor or shooting baskets. That's kind of what they do in the parking lot now. But our youth group has, even during COVID, we took a, obviously we took a pretty big hit, but we're already back up. The 30 teenagers coming on Wednesday nights again. So we have a great, we brought in an associate pastor who's, has, seems to be really attracting the young people, which is what we want. We think it's a great thing for them to be doing on a Wednesday night and they do get Bible instruction as part of that. It's part of what we do, but it just gives them a lot more variety of things that they could. Right now, they've been using the attic of the annex and they've just simply outgrown it. And there's really nowhere else for them to go on the campus currently.
Very nice.
I just have Jeff Carr who will address very briefly the site details.
Mr. Carr, thank you for raising your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, then through the chairman, your credentials to his and the board's acceptance?
Yes. Jeffrey J. Carr, C A R R, with the firm of Lindstrom, Deesner and Carr and Brick. I'm a licensed professional engineer and a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing these professions for over 40 years as the vehicle show. I testified before this board a number of times over the years, as well as hundreds of boards on similar type applications, various religious facilities, as well as typical site plans for commercial, industrial, residential subdivisions and the like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, just give the board, Mr. Roberts has already done it on my operations basis, but just give the board a general overview as to what's being proposed from a site point of view and perhaps we can dive into Mr. Peters' and Mr. Cleese's report thereafter.
Yes, it's. Okay, the site plan is up on the board there. That is sheet number three of eight. It, on the left-hand side shows the overall site plan and on the right-hand side shows an enlarged view of the area where the building addition is going to be. And as was said in the introduction, this project was moved a number of years ago and for various reasons, mostly funding, COVID had some, some impact on that. This phase of the addition wasn't built, but it was approved. For the most part, all of the infrastructure was, was constructed that would support this. The septic system was expanded a number of years ago to handle the entire Phase One and Phase Two. The parking lot was expanded. The detention basin was, was installed. So all of the infrastructure that went with this was constructed and the only thing that wasn't constructed was this building addition. For the most part, it mirrors what was approved back then. There's some slight changes just because the architecture was finalized as, as Mr. Roberts pointed out. But for the most part, it stayed intact. There are, the access to the building is, as the video showed, is through the existing building, but there are outside doors for emergency exits if need be. We have a gravel emergency access with a T-turnaround that is proposed for, for safety and fire. And the existing playground area and sheds that are in that footprint of disturbance will be relocated. The playground will be moved towards the rear of the site and sheds will be shifted over slightly behind the annex building. And as, as I indicated, we think it's relatively simplistic and with other than those minor changes. The only other addition that, that we are proposing that wasn't proposed on the original plan is the replacement of the existing site ID sign. It's going to be placed in the exact location that it is now. You can see it's basically a monument sign. It will still be a monument sign. The sign that you basically see there, while it will not be the exact same one, but that logo and that shape essentially is going to be raised up on the top of the new sign and the new sign will be an LED sign. We're asking for variance for the LED sign since that is not allowed and the location and the location, again, we're keeping it in the same place. It's approximately 19.3 feet off the roadway. And while 25 is required, we think this is an appropriate location. If anybody's driven down and tried to find the sign there, moving it back is just impeded by, especially to the east, that area is a wooded, wetland area, will never be developed. That area is basically vegetated to the road line. So moving it further back would, in my opinion, affect the safety because you wouldn't be able to see the sign until you're, you're almost on top of it. And so we think that's an appropriate location there.
Mr., on page six of Mr. Peters' report, he notes a variance required for height as well, Jeff.
Yeah, yes. 35 feet is required. We are proposing 38 and a half feet. And I think the video speaks well of the height requirement. In order to get the height for, for the basketball and the mezzanine, that height requirement would be there. And again, that's to the peak, that it's a peak roof. So it's basically something that's necessary in order to get that. We're only three and a half feet high above it. And again, it's a sloped roof. So that height declines as you go towards the edges of the building.
And that also creates a site setback.
Yes, there, typically this zone would require a 30-foot setback. Churches have an additional setback requirement of 50 feet. While we meet the 50 feet, they also require for any height above the 35 feet that an additional distance be provided. So by that definition, we would require a setback of 57 feet where we're providing 51.2 feet. So again, we're only, you know, roughly a little more than five, 5.8 feet beyond that setback. But again, I compare that, the zone typically allows for a 30-foot setback. It's just churches have that enhanced setback. I'm not sure why it would be treated differently than, than an office building or any other type of commercial building. But it is, and again, that's a, a, a situation that in order to fit this square footage building, in order to get the basketball court, and you heard Mr. Roberts testify that the basketball court basically fits a full size. There's not a lot of room on, on, on that. So it really isn't practical to shorten that. And we're, we're set with the existing building. So we're kind of locked into that place. So we think that's a, an existing condition that forces this. So in some sense, we think it's a hardship or at least, at the very least, a practical difficulty that rides with the property.
And at 50 feet to the rear of that, it is mostly wood, is that correct?
That's correct. To the left of us or to the, to the east, west, east, west, to the west of us as you're, you're standing on a roadway looking at the building. That, that, there'll still be some wooded area. And again, some of the features that are in, and there's also grassed area along that portion of it. Some of that activity that happens there, the shed and playground are actually being removed. So that'll be put further back. And that area there, even though we have a de minimis setback requirement, there isn't any activity in there. There's a sidewalk so that if the exits are needed for emergency, there's a safe walking area there. And there's the emergency access, but for the most part, there's no activity that occurs in that area.
Regarding, on page seven of Mr. Peters' report, it specifically paragraph six and seven, request testimony regarding some landscaping around a ground sign, provide landscaping.
Yes, we would. The existing sign is well landscaped. In fact, if anybody has been to the site, the site itself is very well landscaped, very well maintained. And we would do the, a similar foundation planting at the base of the proposed sign as well.
And we would agree to paragraph seven, which relates to the four colors regarding the sign, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Just moving on to page eight of Mr. Peters' report again, some traffic circulation comments. Could you just comment on any kind of deliveries and the size of the trucks?
Deliveries, as, as one would expect, are minimal for the church. Of course, they get, you know, FedEx deliveries. If there's some type of, an event that somebody's got to deliver food, that, that, that may be dropped off. Flowers or something, something of decorations or something of that, but those are exceptions to the rule. For the most part, there aren't deliveries that are occurring on, on any type of frequency.
Regarding the utilities, I think you testified that the existing utilities can readily service.
That's correct. In the original approval, the utilities were expanded to, to serve Phase Two as well.
And as far as lighting, could you just describe what lighting?
Yeah, lighting is existing. Yeah, lighting is existing. Again, all of the infrastructure was put in place during Phase One. The only lighting that would be proposed would be door lighting that's required as part of the building code for exits.
Paragraph F relates to the, paragraph one, F1, just requires additional, some additional testimony regarding the landscape buffer around the property, if you could just comment on that.
You know, again, we don't have technically the 25-foot landscape buffer there. There's no buffer that's existing there. There are some, some trees towards the back half of the building. We'll trim some of those for the emergency access, but there will be approximately 15-foot buffer area, and the adjoining property is wooded in that area as well. And again, we're moving some of the, the activity that occurs, at least on that side of the property line, to the rear of the site. And the ordinance also points out that, while the 25-foot landscape buffer is typically required, it does give an exception, except where access drives or other accessory features must, of necessity, traverse this reserved strip. And, and certainly, I think the board would agree that the emergency access around the building would meet this condition.
And it's my understanding that the applicant will comply with the two through nine, is that correct?
Yes, those are basically notes. We've gotten the Forrester's report, we can address the Forrester's comments. We would address all, we would agree with all of those items. And as I've indicated, anybody who's been to the site, it is very well landscaped and very well maintained, and will continue to do so.
Paragraph G relates to the adequacy of the existing trash enclosure, comment on that.
Yes, again, the church is not a big generator of, of trash and recyclables. This was all anticipated with the Phase Two construction, so the existing trash enclosure is suitable for both trash and recyclables.
And you've had a chance to review Mr. Peters' report of April 22, 2021.
Yes, I have.
And the comments contained in there, the applicant, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
The comments contained within Mr. Peters' report, the applicant will conform with?
Yeah, yes, we would. They basically outlined a proposal, outlined the variances, as I testified too.
As well as all the outside agencies?
Yes, we would obtain all outside agency approvals.
Don't have any further questions?
Have any other witnesses?
No.
Any questions from the board? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, can we have just some additional testimony to support the reason for an LED sign as opposed to a standard sign? Is it going to be changeable? We need just some additional testimony on the sign, you're asking for a variant.
Yeah, go with the LED signs?
Yes. They're specifically not permitted.
Yeah, the, the sign detail is, is located on sheet eight of the site plan set. And as I indicated, if you, if you, I don't know if you can put up the sheet eight, the last page. Basically, the sign, if anybody's driven by the site, which I'm sure you have, the sign that's out there now is, is a non-lit. Sign has the Jackson Baptist Church logo, JBC, and, and a logo there. That, and that shape, that's on the, the top of that sign. While that exact sign that's out on the site now will not be reused, it will be mirrored for the top area. So, when you're driving down the road, that's what you'll see on the top of the sign. It'll still be a monument sign. We need a variance for height. We're proposing eight feet where six is allowed. And the area, the allowable area of a sign is 30 feet. We will be proposing between the LED sign, which is the black square on the, on the bottom of it, and then the very bottom is, is a, the monument part, the stonework that'll be landscaped around the base of it. But that, that those two areas combined are approximately 36 square feet. So, we're, we need a variance for area where 30 is required.
How about the frequency of the LED?
My understanding is that it's, obviously, this is not a commercial site, where flashing neon sites, lines are, are going to be going. It's basically a message board that will give some church information or public information, and it would be, it wouldn't be changed very, very often.
So, again, the representation, I apologize.
I believe there are two LED signages on County Line Road, just west of your site.
There's, there's, is it the Holy Chapel Church?
There's another church down farther on the road.
Correct, west of us.
The Jackson Library uses the same type of signage with an LED.
Yes.
Giving announcements, and that's on the left side. So, it's not as if this isn't occurring. There, there are two others that I know of, so this would not be better.
The day where the guy goes and changes the.
Yeah, those days are gone.
Signs with the, with the hall are, are long gone.
Nevertheless, I apologize, Matt, because specifically, it does require a variant, so it just needs some information.
Mr. Roberts can give you perhaps the frequency of what's happening.
It's not going to be flashing.
Right.
Going to maintain.
If I might.
Where are the hours, is it going to shut off, and how close are you to any residents?
I, I really, the only thought that has really gone into it as far as the, is that we now prep banners when we have a men's breakfast, or when we have, you know, a VBS, and there's a separate frame in front of the church, that could be removed now. Nobody really, at the end of the congregation, likes the way that looks when there's nothing on it, it just looks like an empty frame. So, this was really meant to substitute for that. We would, there's no, we would agree to whatever conditions the board would want to put on it. We just think it's a more presentable way of providing that information than putting banners up that are going to be up for a week at a time, and then come down. And that's really the only reason why the trustees asked for it.
I can work through with, with the resolution with Mr. Shea. Okay, any other questions? No? All right, we're going to open it up. All right, we're going to close it all in favor. Okay, any closing?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker? Ms. Britto? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming? Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Harry? Mr. Houdak?
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know everyone's, I made a promise, and I will do my best, yes, exactly, that you are not here. Well, can I get him into executive session? Can I move him into executive session? All right, so, before the adjournment, just want to make note that, as the chairman indicated, we need to go quickly into executive session. Whereas the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution. And whereas it is necessary for the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson to discuss in a session not open to the public certain matters relating to items as set forth below, pending and potential litigation, I now ask that the board make a motion to second to go into executive session.
Second.
Through the vice chair, or can you say it one more time?
One favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So, as soon as everyone has exited. And for members of the public, no action, we don't expect any action to occur. Anyway. Yeah, that's what they're doing, so just as soon as.